Call to order. The regular meeting of the Dickinson City Commission for Tuesday, April 1st, 2025. Let the record show that all commissioners are present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for attending. First item this evening will be the swearing in of Commissioner Frederick. This will be conducted by City Administrator Dossinger.
Please raise your right hand, please. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Jason Frederick.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota.
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of City Commissioner.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of Office of City Commissioner.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
For the general public that are, for your information, Commissioner Frederick had to be sworn back in because of the special recall election. So, once the results were certified, he must be sworn in, and we have just conducted that. So now we'll proceed with the Order of Business. Mr. Dossinger, are there any changes to the Order of Business?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Commission. There is no change to the Order of Business this evening.
Commissioners, are there any questions on the Order of Business? If there are no questions, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion on the Order of Business? Hearing none, all in favor of the Order of Business as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Move on to consent agenda. Commissioners, are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to speak to? If there's no discussion or questions on the consent agenda, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I'd move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion? Any questions? If not, we'll vote. Dr. Baer?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll move into our Administration and Finance. The first item up is our Behavioral Health Summit sponsorship. This will be presented by City Administrator Dossinger.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Commission. The Behavioral Health Summit will be held in Dickinson, June 18th through the 19th of this year. Last year, we sponsored this event at a champion sponsorship level. I'm recommending that the city sponsors this event at the same level, which would be $5,000 this year.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions for Mr. Dossinger on the sponsorship of the Behavioral Health Summit located here in Dickinson? If there are none, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I'd move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Is there any further discussion? There's no further discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. Dr. Baer?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Dossinger, we have some gaming site authorizations.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have three for Dickinson Charities this evening. The first one's going to be at Player's Sports Bar and Grill, located at 2051st Avenue East. The effective date of these renewals for these gaming sites are all from July 1st of 2025 to June 30th of 26. For Player's Sports Bar and Grill, this would be approval for bingo, raffles, pull tab jar, pull tab dispensing devices, and electronic pull tab device. The second one for Dickinson Charities would be located at Astoria Bar and Grill, located at 36315th Street West. Again, same effective date. That would be for raffles, electronic pull tab devices, and 21. And then the last one for Dickinson Charities would be located at their office, which is 1173 3rd Avenue West, Suite Number 36. And this would be for raffles. City staff has reviewed the applications for Dickinson Charities and recommends approval of those three.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions on the Dickinson Charities gaming site authorizations?
Mr. President, move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Dr. Baer?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Dossinger, you have one for the Brotherhood of St. Anthony.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one more gaming site authorization request this evening. This is for the St. Anthony Club, located at 105 First Street Southeast. This would be for bingo, pull tab jar, and electronic pull tab devices. City staff has reviewed the application and recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions on the St. Anthony's gaming authorization? If there are none, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion? Any questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Dr. Baer?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Dossinger, the next item up is our Public Comments Not on the Agenda Resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Commission. As you know, we've had several discussions at Commission meetings regarding a citizen comment guideline policy and decorum guideline policy. In your package, you did have a resolution with the changes that were made since our last presentation. I'll go through the section in which there was changes made. In Section 1.3, under Citizen Comment, each speaker will be limited to five minutes, and the time from one speaker cannot be used by another speaker. We added that the presiding officer may extend the speaker's time should the presiding officer in his or her discretion determine that further discussion is warranted and appropriate. Underneath Section 1.5, we added that individuals who wish to speak shall be required to sign in prior to the meeting and provide their names and addresses on a city-approved signup sheet. And also underneath 1.6, we added that individuals who wish to speak shall be required to sign in prior to the meeting and provide their name and address on a city-approved signup sheet. Those were the changes that we brought forward. I would like to point out that when the individual's address that would be on the signup chart would be an exempt record under North Dakota Sentry Code subsection 5 of 440417.1. So their name would be, still would have to be given off an open records request was made, but not the address portion of it on the city signup sheet.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Commissioners, any discussion, questions?
Mr. President.
Commissioner Baer?
I'm requesting that we table this for right now, based on the fact that, for two reasons. Number one, it is currently, in the legislation, is currently looking at this issue, and it has gone to committee this week. I would like to wait and see what changes are made in this legislation that in all likelihood is going to be passed. Plus, during our most recent seminar with the League of Cities that we attended, there was some information brought forth during that seminar that I thought is important for us to take into some consideration with this document. So I really don't want to rush this. I would like to make sure that we do it right, so that we're not reinventing the wheel. And my suggestion is that we table it and that we do, I would like to have a workshop on this. At first, I was thinking about a one hour, but I think we need about a two-hour, maybe broken down into two sessions, workshop where we can kind of sit down and work through this and make sure this is done correctly.
Commissioner Baer, do you have any feelings on the committee down there, the hearings? Which way they're leaning?
I believe that they are leaning towards that, the present way it is written, I believe it is to be in, I think 25% of the meetings are to be open for public comments, and it is, the recommended changes now is that it is to be, one of the recommended changes is that it is to be at all meetings. And that is one thing that's up for consideration, plus the time period and just the language. I kind of think that we need to mirror what the new code is going to be, since that's going to be state law, I think it needs to be part of our law too. So I just don't, I didn't so want to put this out here now, only to come back here in a month after this gets signed, because I'm pretty sure it's going to be signed by the governor and have to redo this.
And that will become effective August 1st, right?
Correct.
Mr. President?
Commissioner Oderman?
This would maybe be a question for Mrs. Wanko, but when I read 2180, it's not that it has to be in code, it's that we have to have a policy.
Commissioner Oderman, the way that I read the current proposed legislation this morning, it says that the cities may adopt policy, and then it gives some examples of what can be included in that policy. So when we use the word "may," well, let me back up here. So this must be a new version, because this one now says "shall." So it says, "They may, shall develop a policy regarding public comment," and then the policy "may" provide public comment, and then it gives the examples of what is listed. Those examples are what's currently in the proposed policy that we currently have in front of you. Must be pertinent to the public entity, may not interfere with the orderly conduct of the regular meeting, may not be defamatory, abusive, harassing, or unlawful, and may be prohibited if an alternative procedure exists to bring that particular type of public comment before the public entity. The public comment includes confidential or exempt information, or the public comment is otherwise prohibited by law. These recommendations are what's currently in the policy in front of you. I think that the only thing that might, again to Dr. Baer's point, that might change would be the amount of time or the amount of meetings that have to be open to public comment, but in this current version, that's not addressed in there, so...
So it's a policy, it's not code?
This would be a statutory provision that would apply to all cities, and then the cities would then have to then adopt their own policies that would be consistent with this, or, again, this is being used as a guideline for cities to follow.
Sure. I have no interest in workshopping this more than the three hours we already have at public meetings and at work sessions. I mean, we've talked about it at multiple City Commission meetings till we've been blue in the face, and then we also talked about it in a work session back in November or December. So like, I don't know what additional ground we can cover on this. I feel like we've hammered through this pretty diligently.
My thought is, is it's going in front of the committee this week for discussion. I would like to see if any additional changes are made. So that's why I'm asking to table it, to see what happens this week.
I think as I read it, though, the only thing would be if they put in the 25% or make it every meeting, which we already have every meeting. So the only other restriction would be the 25%, which we could become more restrictive. We could go to one meeting a quarter that allows public comments.
That's possible. I think from our perspective, and again, that's completely up to you, obviously being consistent with what the Sentry Code would say and what the minimum requirements would be, but you could also take the alternate approach and say that you would require public comment at every meeting, but it has to meet these parameters. You could do that as well. I think that the thought process being is, you just, generally, we can't be, you can be more restrictive but not less restrictive is usually the thought rationale there. So I think that the way this is drafted, absent some kind of wild and crazy change, I don't think we're going to see a lot of change between what's currently in front of you and this, absent some requirement with percentages of meetings or something like that. I haven't been paying attention to those meetings as much as Dr. Baer has, so he's probably got a little bit more insight on those a little bit, but it is possible we could see some changes, but like I said, what is provided for here, what the cities must use as a guideline is already included, if that makes any sense, or clarifies anything.
Well, and I guess my, pointing my question with change of code or policy, that's a really simple change to make. If it's a city policy, and we approve this tonight, and something crazy happens, it's simply, we bring it forward at a future meeting, we don't have to do two readings or anything like that, we can change it in real time.
Yes, Commissioner Oderman, the way that this is currently being proposed in front of all of you is as a policy. It is not in city code, which would require two readings and an ordinance change and all that, so...
I think we just rip the Band-Aid off, get it done.
Commissioners, any other comments? Well, this would be Resolution 10-2025, if I'm correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Are there anything on the amended policy that commissioners wish to discuss that is in the red, that has been brought before you?
Commissioners, I will make one other further comment. City Administrator Dossinger did hit on it, but Commissioner Oderman had asked some questions at the last meeting with regard to the home address and how someone might not feel comfortable giving us that information. There was an additional amendment made to the proposed statutory language that would qualify a home address as being exempt, which for the public, what that means is, an exempt record is a record that the city can choose to disclose or not disclose. So, you know, depending on the circumstances, the city would have the ability to withhold that information for the, as an exempt record. So that would apply to us in that situation.
Any further questions, comments?
So, what I'm understanding, the only thing that would possibly maybe come out of the state is how many meetings we had to allow the public comments. As of right now, we're allowing it at every meeting, we're just putting these limitations on them.
That is my understanding, and again, maybe Commissioner Baer can weigh in on that as well, but that's one possibility, I'm told.
That is one possibility. The other question, I was, I contacted the League of Cities today, and I wanted to know a little bit more about the need for the address, the requirement for writing down the address. Is that, does that mean that those addresses are so that only people within city limits then are allowed to address the commission? Or if somebody comes in from Hawaii and they want to talk about something in front of the commission, they give their address, do they get to address the commission? I mean, I would like to have, and Stephanie was over at the Capitol, so I was not able to talk to her. So I was just wanting some more clarification on a couple of things. That's why I was asking for, just waiting to see how this week goes and see if she would answer my question, but...
And to your point, Dr. Baer, looking at the proposal, as the current bill has been amended and redrafted, it just provides that an individual may provide public comment. It does further require that that individual must provide, prior to making any comment, in writing the individual's name and address, but it does not specifically say in this proposal in 2180 that that has to be for an individual as identified by a resident or within the ETZ or anything like that. That language is not in 2180.
Right. So does that mean anybody then can talk? Is that your understanding?
Based on the way that this is drafted, without that limitation, I would interpret it that way, yes.
Okay. And that's what, that's what I want, is that going to change? Is this going to, I'm not sure. That's, so, we could visit that again. I do, Ms. Wanko, I do have a question.
Yes, Dr. Baer.
And maybe you could direct me to the place. If somebody wants to come up, let's say, someone comes up and they talk on a specific issue, and they get there five, 10 minutes, and then as they go and sit down, someone comes up and brings up another issue that's not pertaining to the issue they brought up, is that individual then allowed to get up and make a comment on that, especially if it pertains to them?
So the example that you're proposing would be if a citizen stood at the podium, made comments with regard to one particular incident or subject matter, and someone else comes to the podium and talks about a different subject matter, does that first individual have the ability to come forward and make an additional comment with regard to that subject matter?
Correct.
I don't, I can honestly say, Dr. Baer, that I don't think that the, I think the way that it's written is that one individual has the opportunity to approach this commission and talk for five minutes on a topic of their choosing. I think that the commission would have the ability to allow that individual to speak further if that was something that you provided, and it was relevant and related to the topic. I think you have the ability to make those decisions as a commission, if the president of the commission deems it appropriate and warranted. But I think the goal here is that that person comes forward, makes their comments, does so in such a way that if there's further comment that's warranted, obviously you have the ability to extend that should you choose to do that. But I also, I don't know if it's meant to be a dialogue either, where it's a dialogue between the citizens talking versus it's an opportunity for you to hear that information, take that information, and then decide what needs to be done with it thereafter, as opposed to, again, having it being a dialogue between citizens on a particular issue. I think that would be the concern there, depending on how that was approached and handled.
Yeah, I'm not looking for dialogue between citizens, I'm just saying, if another citizen brings up a different topic, and the issue, and the individual who previously spoke has a comment regarding, that pertains to them on that issue, I just want them to be able to speak.
Sure.
To share their point of view or their concern. That's, I think that's fair. I think that's...
Just a quick update, this did pass 85 to 4 in the House today.
Okay.
So it's got sent to Conference Committee.
At the current language that, yes, was read. Okay, what, is there a timetable? I mean, is there, is it the 25% or is it unlimited?
I don't see that requirement in here, in terms of like setting that down. Says they may limit a public comment by times per speaker, total time for public comment or both, and then they shall develop a policy regarding public comment rules for regular meetings. So, I mean, basically what they read here a little bit ago.
I mean, we are far from, far from restrictive comparative to cities that have zero public comments. And large cities that allow two and a half minutes.
Yeah.
So, and I think we've been more than welcoming all comments to things that pertain to the city.
So, Mr. President, I would move to approve the resolution as presented by city staff.
We have a motion to approve 10-2025 by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick for the discussion. Questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Dr. Baer? Mr. Riddle?
No.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Our next item up is the reclassification for the Assistant Library Director. This will be presented by Library Director Equino.
Good evening, Commissioners. For your consideration this evening, we are asking that the Library Director, Assistant Library Director position be elevated from a grade 16 to a grade 17. This change in grade was included in our approved 2025 budget, so no additional funds are being requested for this change. Pardon me. Over the 10 years of Ms. Newton's service, she has absorbed a lot of responsibilities for the library that go above and beyond the current job description that is entailed by the Assistant Director, the chief of those being, she is our liaison and the chief implementer of the changes for our ILS that we receive from Oden, that's the Online Dakota Information Network. They manage the ILS for the entirety of the North Dakota Library Consortium. It is both involved and quite technical. It does take up a great deal of her time, and it does go above and beyond the requirements we'd have for an ordinary librarian. She's also taken on some additional duties in assisting us with annual budget and some additional supervisory responsibilities as well. Ms. Newton also oversees the part-time library staff in a much more direct fashion than we used to really have the Assistant Director take on. We've also updated some of the educational requirements for this position. A bachelor's degree is now required, with a master's in library science being preferred. Three to five years of progressively responsible library experience is also something we'd be looking for, for future applicants in this role. Any questions on any of those items that I have for you there, Commissioners?
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioners, on this reclassification? Now I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion? Questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Dr. Baer?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Next, we'll have a discussion on our N.D. Peres 457 Retirement Plan, and I think we got a pinch hitter in from Mrs. Nomenek.
Good evening, Commissioners and President Decker. I'm Natalie Torgerson. I am the HR Generalist. I wanted to come talk to you tonight on behalf of Shelley about the 457 plan. We do have the presentation that we can go through again. There were some follow-up questions, so we'll go through this, and then we can get into the questions. So on 1-1-2025, the N.D. Peres main DB plan closed, so that's like the pension plan, and now they are doing a DC plan. So the new employee required contribution for that is 4% with a 5.26% by the city. The new employee only has 30 days to make an irrevocable election of an extra 3%, okay? So if they do not choose to go up to that 7% in the first 30 days, they can never up it again, so that's why we're asking for the 457. Same thing as if they do lock in, then they are locked in forever, even if they leave the city and go someplace else, they would still carry that with them. I think that's what that says, 30 days. If we choose to offer the N.D. Peres 457 plan, the employee can choose at any time to contribute up to an additional 3%, meaning I start at the city when I'm 20 years old and retirement's not that important to me, but now I'm here when I'm 30 and I want to have... have a family, now I would like to go ahead and contribute the extra three percent. If we allow the four fifty-seven, that's what they can do. It also gives employees a little bit of flexibility if they want to stop it or start it throughout the year, like Peres used as an example, maybe to save Christmas money if I'm doing the extra three percent, but maybe in October I'll stop it and only put in one percent so I can pocket the rest of that money. We can go through again what the plans are that we offer right now. We do have five different plans. So, we have a few people in the Brevera DC plan that is closed. And, Dr. Baer, you had posed the question last time, if we open the four fifty-seven, if we do that, can people from Brevera join the DC plan with Peres? We're watching House Bill sixteen oh-two right now, and if that passes, it's a maybe. But as of now, it's not. It's not allowed, so they'd have to stay with Brevera. We have the main DB plan that's closed that we talked about with Peres, where the employee puts in seven and the city puts in eight-point-twelve percent totaling sixteen-point-two-six. There's another main plan, same thing, seven percent, nine-point-two-six by the city, same total, sixteen-point-two-six. And then we have the public safety plan, and that one is still open, so anyone that joins us in public safety, fire, or police goes into that. And then this new DC plan, like we're talking about, the employee again puts in four percent, the city puts in five-point-two-six percent. I have had, I want to say, seven new hires start, and five of them have elected the extra three percent, two of them have not. So, if that gives you any indication, I wanted to throw that out there. That's the same thing that you guys saw last time. So, the benefits, I think I just talked about those, recruitment and retention, support employee financial wellness, and it gives them flexibility so then they're, if they miss out after thirty days, that would be, that would be not good. Shelley wanted me to let you guys know that tonight, we're not looking for a yes or a no totally to open it. We're just asking for a yes to move forward with it. We would then bring a resolution in front of you guys to sign, and then it would be voted on. She did come up with a report that was presented to her by Oderman and the mayor. If all current employees left and were rehired, taking the extra three percent, what would that cost? This is completely hypothetical because we're not going to turn over two-hundred-and-twenty-five full-time employees and rehire them. So, current plan total without the DB plan is one million, two-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand, two-ninety-two. The hypothetical total if we rehired everyone would be one million, one-hundred-and-three-thousand, seven-eighty-one. So, it would actually be a savings of one-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand. So, like I said, that is a fictitious number since we're not going to lose everyone, but we do recommend approval, and tonight we're just looking for a yes to move forward with the four fifty-seven with the state. And I would be glad to take any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Torgerson. Any questions? I guess I'd look for a motion. The motion would be to have HR move forward with this plan, unless you're opposed to it.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion? All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. Look forward to your resolution.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
We have an update from Deputy City Administrator Carlson on the recall election.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. So, with the recall election update, I categorized all the election expenses. You can see down there, we are, the main ones are the ballots, six-eighty-five, the ballot envelopes, the publications, the postage. We did it at city bulk rate. The postage is actually for the absentee envelopes that when they bring in an application, we have to send them out a actual ballot. So, we use the city bulk rate on that. The election workers, this is the total for all the election workers that we had, including the absentee officer and everything, that were paid out. Food and beverage, that included thirteen people, that included our security and everybody that was up there working on that. And then now the wages, the city security team, the city staff, that is our wages that we put in the hours, we track hours on that, and that also includes the city attorney also on that for those hours. The venue, the BAC, it was in-kind services of one-hundred-and-fifty in Brevera Suite that we used to house all the supplies and everything at the BAC, also in-kind services, but putting up the total amount there. So, as a summary, the March tenth, we had the closing of the ballots, City Hall, forty-three ballots were sent out. One was spoiled. Spoiled means we couldn't use it. Thirty-nine ballots were returned, forty, excuse me, three ballots were not returned out of the ones that were sent out. One ballot was set aside for the canvassing board. On March eleventh, the closing of the polling place at the BAC, we also had one ballot was spoiled, and then six-hundred-and-twelve ballots registered voters. As March twenty-fourth, the canvassing board met, reviewed, and certified the abstract of votes. The official election results are as follows. The six-twenty-six votes were cast for Mr. Frederick, and twenty-five votes were cast for write-in candidates, total of the six-hundred-and-fifty-one votes for the absentee and the BAC. And with that, I would stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Any questions for Mrs. Carlson on the recall election update?
Mr. President?
Commissioner Riddle?
I've had a few people reach out to me and wonder on the breakdown on the city staff dollars. I mean, dollars per hour versus hours, so on and so forth. Can you touch on that a little bit, please?
I don't have that with me, Commissioner Riddle, but I definitely can get that. It's, I've got it all categorized down. I just did the summary on it, but I did not bring that with me at this time. I apologize for that. But I can get that for you. That is no problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions, comments?
Mrs. Carlson?
Yes.
Do you have any outstanding expenses that might still come in?
No, all the expenses have been paid now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Now, we'll move on to the next item. Coffee with the Mayor and Commissioners. Mr. Dossinger?
Thank you, Mr. President, and with the Commission. The city is excited to celebrate City Government Week from April seventh to April eleventh, with a series of events designated to engage our community and highlight the services we provide. We'll kick off with a coffee with the Mayor and Commissioners, which will be held here at the, in this commission room on April ninth, which is a Wednesday, at eight-thirty a.m. It's a great opportunity for residents to meet with city leadership and discuss community matters over coffee. Our second event, we will have a tree planting by our forestry department at our Public Works complex on the north side. This will be held at two o'clock on Wednesday, April ninth. We will also then have a public safety open house on Thursday, April tenth, beginning at eight-thirty. This will be hosted by the police and fire departments. This event will feature coffee and donuts while allowing residents to engage with our first responders and tour the facilities. IT Department will be launching their podcast, which will be called Spicy Spotlight. The new podcast will provide an inside look at our community and city operations while exploring the topic of one fiery bite at a time. So, after that, the HR Department is going to be working a coloring contest in grades K through five, fun activity designed to engage our younger residents. And the city planner, Recycling Division Engineering, will be visiting the schools. These departments will be in the schools, educating them about city services, public works, and our environmental stewardship. So, we invite the community to join us. All these events will be posted on our website and our social media platforms.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions with the Government Week activities? Hearing none, we'll move into Public Works. We have some ...
I have one comment.
Okay. Hold up, Mr. Prowse. Commissioner Baer?
Sorry, sir.
Go ahead.
Next year, when we go to do City Government Week, one of the challenges I'm going to ask for our third grade and seventh grade teachers out there, the League of Cities puts out a essay contest for if I was mayor for a day, and it's open to third graders and seventh graders. I'm one of the judges for that particular essay, and I would like next year, if we could get some entries there for, from Dickinson. I was getting, reading essays from other cities around the state, and it would be really good to see if we were represented next year. So, I would encourage like Trinity and Dickinson Schools and all the, Hope Academy and that to hop in there and write some essays next year. So, I would have that information if they are interested in getting in contact with me. I'd just like to have some engagement with Dickinson and that.
In the past, though, there has been individuals that have been selected to be the mayor for a day. So, I don't know if that's just dropped off because I think sometimes teachers rotate out and they, you don't get that same teacher back, and you don't, you know, they don't look at that as an important topic to, so I think we can get the word out.
We're going to have to get you into the classrooms.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments? All right. Thank you, Commissioner Baer. Okay, Mr. Prowse, landfill loader bid?
Good evening, Mayor Decker and Commissioners. Before you tonight, to ask for approval for a purchase of a waste handler landfill loader for Dickinson landfill. Bids were open on March seventeenth. We received three, received seven bids total from three different companies. Butler bid a nine-sixty-two after trade-in for three-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand, nine-hundred. Type Machinery bid four, bid one unit with four different options. In your packet were the bid totals, option C and option D. We had to purchase the tires and install it onto those loaders, in which would have cost us an additional twenty thousand dollars. And then John Deere or RDO had bid two different loaders, and same situation to what I just said. We'd have to purchase the tires at a cost of about twenty thousand dollars, which we'd have to factor into the price of the machine. All of the units had a little bit of deviations to what we were requesting, but after review by city staff, it's a recommendation of public work staff to purchase the nine-sixty-two Caterpillar loader from Butler Machinery with a total cost of a trade-in of, after trade-in of three-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand, nine-hundred dollars. This unit will be replacing a twenty-sixteen CAT nine-fifty, which is currently used in our waste handling processes at our landfill, and this was a twenty-twenty-five budgeted item for four-hundred-thousand dollars over a five-year lease. I am open to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Prowse. Any questions for Mr. Prowse on the loader bid? There are none, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion? Questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Dr. Baer?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Prowse, do you have front-load equipment bid?
Yes, same situation. March seventeenth, we opened up bids for a front-load refuse collection truck. Only one bid was received from Northland Truck Sales in a total cost of three-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty dollars. This unit will be replacing a twenty-seventeen front-load truck, in which they offered sixty-two-thousand, five-hundred. We also did add in the replacement of our, to liquidate our rear-load collection trucks, truck, which we no longer use. It's a two-thousand-and-fifteen model, bringing the final cost for the purchase of this truck to two-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty dollars. We are currently using other units in our fleet that are similar to this unit, and this is a twenty-twenty-five budgeted capital purchase item for the amount of three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand over a five-year lease. I'm open to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Prowse. Any questions on the front-load equipment for solid waste? If there are no questions, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion? Question? Now, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Dr. Baer?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. And, Mr. Prowse, do you have the concrete asphalt crushing contract?
Yes, and I will apologize for the late delivery to your packets on this one, but it is a time-sensitive item. So, yesterday morning, we did open quotes. We solicited quotes by RFP to provide concrete and asphalt crushing services to our current stockpiles that are located at the Dickinson landfill. Stockpiles are estimated at approximately twelve thousand tons each. Received two bids from Fisher Sand and Gravel and Knife River Corporation, in which we're in the packet for you to review. After going through the two bids, the notations we made, Fisher's added a twenty-thousand-dollar mobilization fee into their quote, in which Knife River did not. However, using our formula of two ton per cubic yard of materials, the concrete between the two bids was three dollars and eighty-seven cents a cubic yard difference, which would be about twenty-three thousand, and the asphalt was two dollars and ten cents difference per cubic yard, which would be twelve-thousand, six-hundred, bringing a total savings or a total difference between the Fisher bid to the Knife River bid of a little better than thirty-five thousand dollars. Less the twenty-thousand-dollar mob fee, we'd still be at about a fifteen, sixteen-thousand-dollar savings to the city. And again, that's based on six thousand cubic yards. It's public work staff recommendation to offer the services to Fisher Sand and Gravel at the quote that they presented. This is a time-sensitive agenda item. As we have recently allocated all of our current crushed stockpiles to the North Industries project, therefore, it's not leaving us any remaining materials to use throughout the duration of the summer as projects do arise. And I will entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Prowse. Any questions on the concrete asphalt crushing contract? There are no questions, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Dr. Baer?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prowse.
Mr. President?
Commissioner Baer?
May I ask Mr. Prowse a question before he leaves? Sorry, sometimes you leave the meeting before you get to our point. I just, I have a question for you regarding the landfill.
Yes.
So, I'm just wondering, do we, what is done to help reduce issues with plastic grocery bags out at the landfill? Does that, has that been an issue for us? And, you know, is there something we do, is something we could do? I'll tell you why this was brought to my attention. I was talking with some other commissioners when we were down at our, at the League of Cities, and some of the landfills are having problems, and it's getting into like ranchers, rancher land, and then the cows eat the bags, and the cows have issues, and then the city ends up buying a new cow. So, I was wondering, what do we do to control that? Has that ever been an issue for us? Where do we stand on that?
Yes, it definitely has been an issue historically for us. This is one of the reasons why we push or we have a baling facility. The baling facility takes that waste, those bags, compresses it into cubes, and then we send it to the landfill. So, a plastic bag is very similar to a balloon. Once it becomes airborne, there's no fence that'll stop it until it accumulates on the neighbors down the road. There has been situations where the neighbors out there have complained about the bags. We've went out, we've cleaned up various areas around our site. The second part behind this is recycling coordinator Shoemaker got tied into a recycling project, I believe it's with Trex, to where you can deliver bags of bags, if you want to say, to our Baylor facility. We'll compress them, and then we ship them off. We work with a local retailer to ship them off to the Trex plant for recycling purposes to make into a product.
Is there any way we could put bins like that around town?
I believe there might actually be one right outside here.
Yeah, I know there's one out here.
And I know they have one at the Baylor building. It's a cardboard box bin.
Okay.
And putting them around town, I'll reference it very similar to gas stations. And putting them around town, I'll reference it very similar to gas stations, when you see all the garbage blowing out of the gas station containers.
Yeah.
So that would happen there as well.
Okay, but people could bring them here and take them out to the Baylor?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we'll move into community development. We have our Dickinson downtown, our downtown Dickinson drainage basin brick cost share request letter. This will be presented by Planner Burcek. Welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. Natalie Burcek, City Planner. For your consideration is a cost share letter for the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Program, or the BRIC program, grant application that serves as a commitment of the City of Dickinson to provide the program's required local matching funds. A portion of the intent of this project is to increase the size of the storm drain system within downtown Dickinson in order to limit flooding and better handle 10-year storm events. The project is included in the City of Dickinson's Drainage Master Plan. The maximum federal grant award is 75% from the BRIC program, and the remaining 25% is local matching funds from the City of Dickinson. Based on the current estimates, the grant application is anticipated to be for $350,000, and the City of Dickinson's cost share is estimated to be $85,500. The cost share is solely factoring in the scoping portion of the project, and the city engineering staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Ms. Burcek. Any questions on the BRIC cost share? If there are none, I'd look for a motion.
I would move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Oderman. Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a DWR cost share, letter of recommendation for the Fifth Street Southeast project. This will be presented by Community Development Director Skoljak.
Good evening, Mr. President. Commissioners, for your consideration is a letter of support for the North Dakota Department of Tran, oh, Department of Water Resources, or DWR, grant application to authorize the City of Dickinson to submit the project grant application. A portion of the intent of the project is to extend the water main approximately 670 feet to loop the system to the existing water main that's located in Sixth Avenue Southeast. The project is included in the 2025 through 2027 DWR Water Development Plan, which increases the probability of success of being awarded the grant. The municipal water cost share has a maximum of 60% funding from the DWR, which means 40% of the funding would have to come from the City of Dickinson. Based on the current estimates, this grant application is for approximately $200,000. City of Dickinson cost share would be approximately 100,000. Both construction and then the cost of construction engineering are eligible cost share items. This letter of support is a new requirement for the, from the DWR as of this year. City of Eng, city engineering staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Skoljak. Any questions on this Fifth Street Southeast project? If there are no questions, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bear. Any further discussion? Questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We now, we have another DWR cost share, a letter of recommendation for the 10th Avenue East Museum, Two Museum, 21st Street project.
Good evening again, Mr. President. Commissioners, for your consideration is a letter of support through the North Dakota Department of Water Resources, or DWR, for their grant application to authorize the City of Dickinson to submit the project grant application. The project was included on the 2025 through 2027 DWR Water Development Plan, which increases the probability of success of being awarded the grant. The municipal water supply cost share maximum is 60% for the, for the DWR. 40% of that cost will have to be paid for by the City of Dickinson. Based on the current estimates, the grant application is anticipated to be for about $280,000, and the City of Dickinson cost share is estimated to be about 180,000. Both construction and construction engineering costs are eligible cost share items. This letter of support is a new requirement through the DWR. City engineering staff recommends approval. The segment shown on the, on the map, there's a, that segment that we intend to remove and replace, that is a, an AC or asbestos concrete water main, and normally when we have significant construction traffic over areas with that AC pipe, it is susceptible to, to cracking, and so ultimately, we intend where there's going to be construction activity, we intend to replace that with this project. So, as I said, engineering staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Ms. Skoljak. Any questions? If there are no questions, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Ms. Skoljak, you have a cost share letter for the Northwest Regional Pond Project.
Good evening again, Mr. President. Commissioners, for your consideration is a letter of support for the Nor, North Dakota Department of Water Resources, or DWR, cost share application. Letter will authorize the City of Dickinson to submit the project for cost sharing with the DWR. The project was included in the 2025 through 2027 DWR Water Development Plan, which increases the probability of success being awarded the cost share. The municipal cost share is a maximum 60% through the DWR. 40% of that cost is City of Dickinson responsibility. Based on current project needs, we're ultimately planning to combine the Northwest Regional Pond with the Dickinson Drainage Way into a single project submittal. If there's need to separate these in the future, we'll take that action based on those needs and feedback from the DWR, or based on the project-specific needs. Based on current estimates, the cost share application for the two combined projects is anticipated to be 510,000, and the City of Dickinson cost share is estimated to be 340,000. Total study of 850,000. Project study isn't eligible cost share item, and letter of support is a new requirement for the DWR as of 2025. This was included in the 2025 Capital Improvement Plan funded through gross production tax, and city engineering staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Ms. Skoljak. Any questions on the Northwest Regional Pond Project? If there are no questions, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner, Commissioner Riddle.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bear. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. And last thing in community development, we have a Fairway Drainage Basin Brick Cost Share Request. This will be presented by City Planner Burcek.
Good evening, Commissioners. Natalie Burcek, City Planner. For your consideration is a cost share letter for the BRIC program grant application that serves as a commitment of the City of Dickinson to provide the program's required local matching funds. A portion of the intent of this project is to increase the size of the storm drain system within the Fairway Street, State Avenue, and Eighth Avenue West corridor in order to better, better handle the 10-year and 100-year storm events. The project is included in the City of Dickinson's Drainage Master Plan, and the maximum federal grant award is 75% from the BRIC program, and the remaining 25% is local matching funds from the City of Dickinson. So based on current estimates, the grant application is anticipated to be for 350,727.27, and the City of Dickinson cost share is estimated to be 87,681.82. This cost share solely factors in the scoping portion of the project. The city engineering staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Ms. Burcek. Any questions on this Fairway Drainage project? If there are no questions, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion? Questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will move right into public comments, not on the agenda. If you wish to come forward, please state your name. We can hear your comments.
Good evening. I see that the Ryan memo passed. I appreciate Mr. Bear and Commissioner Riddle voting against that. It's going to be a problem, because rebellion against tyranny is obedience to God. And I was gonna say, quite a bit tonight on Freemasonry and psychiatry, but based on Mr. Bear's comments, I'm striking all that from my speech, and although I would caution against both of those. First Samuel 30, there's an account of David who's on the run from King Saul. Saul is jealous of him. Well, the Amalekites invade and take David's women and children hostage, so David has a tough task on his hands. He has to strategically attack so that no harm is done to the women and children captives, but the Amalekite invaders must be destroyed. And that's the task that confronts me at these meetings. Hundreds of millions of Americans are captives in their minds, and they don't realize it. My goal is to destroy those enslaving hundreds of millions of Americans by simply telling the truth. As we can tell, many think I am the enemy and are blind to the real enemies. As Paul said in Galatians, "Do I become your enemy because I tell you the truth?" And before I continue, I also wanted to say, I appreciate Commissioner Riddle's inquisition, because I think it's simply outrageous that 700 votes being counted should cost the city $27,000. That's mind-boggling. I, I can't, and, and the city staff getting paid $23,000. That's just, and, and food and beverages paid for by the taxpayers. I mean, if you want food and beverages, pay for that out of your own pocket. Don't charge the taxpayers for it. One of the fundamental precepts of our justice system is summed up in a quote from Blackstone, one of the men considered to be the father of the modern justice system. "It is better to let ten guilty people go free than to wrongly convict one innocent person," is the essence of it. It's a beautiful sentiment. So when I'm up here talking about the media and our Federal Reserve being controlled by Talmudic Jews, I want to be clear, it isn't all Jews. I've learned more about Jewish wickedness from other Jews than I have from anyone else. When I say America should be 90% white, that doesn't mean all non-whites are bad. It simply reflects the wishes of the founders of the state and our nation, who recognize what the lying egalitarian media today desperately tries to hide. There are differences between the races. Are we all equal before God? Sure, but there are definite body, brain, and behavior differences, unique to different races. This is why there is a huge push right now to mix the races, so that these differences disappear forever. Israel doesn't mix the races, though. They make sure you are Jewish before you move there, and you must be Jewish to marry there. When you see pictures of Israel, you never see blacks, Asians, or Latinos, because they don't want those races there. And yet, we give the most foreign aid to Israel. I am thankful for what has happened in Dickinson in the last few months. At the last meeting, we had more speakers on this free speech issue than at any other meeting I've attended. Your YouTube channel went from around 25 to 150 views, to about 3,000 to 2,000 views. So people are interested. I don't know why the YouTube comments are disabled, or who made this decision. I know the mayor and others have expressed concern about me coming up here to speak and saying that I'm not from Dickinson. Well, Ms. Carlson and Ms. Benstock don't live in Dickinson, yet they work for Dickinson. So, you know, it's, I think we should be fair about this. If we want to have these standards, well, maybe you shouldn't have employees here who don't live in this city. Maybe they should get jobs in their own cities. A Dickinson business employee, so I have every right to speak up here. But it really shouldn't matter what, what city I live in. Every American citizen should have the right to free speech, and if every American leader does not have the objective truth, that's a problem. For me, if I go to speak in Paris, in London, in Moscow, in Beijing, in Minot, in San Francisco, I'm okay. I can stand up against criticism, because I have the truth. I don't need to be just from one city. The truth doesn't care about what city or what country. It's the truth for every man, for all time, and for all circumstances. That's objective truth. The only people who are afraid of the truth are those who are living a lie. There are thousands of city council and school board meetings in America, where the city councils and school boards attempt to silence speakers by saying, "What you are saying isn't in our jurisdiction." But it is. Crime, theft by banks, illegal immigration, this is all happening in Dickinson. We should have the attitude of this saying. There's a little story about four people named everybody, somebody, anybody, and nobody. There was an important job to be done, and everybody was sure that somebody would do it. Anybody could have done it, but nobody did it. Somebody got angry about that, because it was everybody's job. Everybody thought that anybody could do it, but nobody realized that everybody wouldn't do it. And it ended up that everybody blamed somebody, when nobody did what anybody could have done. If you're a leader and something is wrong in your city, that is your responsibility. If you dislike taking responsibility, you aren't qualified for the job, and the town needs new leaders. There is the idea that if someone says something that many people don't like, that that must be wrong. Well, that's the appeal to, to popular logical fallacy. Something can be very unpopular, and it can be true. So that's something that I think needs to be considered here. When you tell the truth, you disturb the comfortable and comfort the disturbed. We have to consider the truth about leaders. Leaders, Romans 13 actually defines the leaders of our nation, and, and these were the leaders in 1776. And by the way, when I come up here and speak, what you're hearing is what the founders of this nation, what you're hearing is what the people in America in 1900, they would have been saying the exact same thing that I'm up here right now saying. So when you disagree with me, you're disagreeing with Madison, Jefferson, Washington, Franklin, Dickinson, Sherman, all of these people, you're disagreeing with them. And, and you know, it's funny, because this whole discussion of free speech, you know what I never heard? The, and the only one that really truly reflects the ideals of the founders is Commissioner Riddle. What I never heard was anybody refer to the founders of this nation. I heard people talk about other cities, people talk about the League of Cities, I heard people talk about the legislature, but I never heard the central defining characteristic of this nation, which is the founders and the spirit and letter of their laws. I never heard that any of that were discussed. And that's why a knowledge of history is so important, and I'm going to repeat the quote that I said the other night, and that is that, "If you don't know history, you don't know anything at all. You're like a leaf that doesn't know it's connected to a tree." And that was from Michael Crichton, who wrote Jurassic Park. But Truman said the same thing, that the only thing new is the history that we don't know. And so did Solomon. There is nothing new under the sun. And so did Santana. Those who do not know history are doomed to repeat it. So this lack of knowledge of history is a huge problem, and you saw every single speaker that came up here to oppose me, every single one of them had no knowledge of history. I asked them basic questions about the founders, they didn't know anything, and they got indignant about it. I asked the woman, who was Ms. Murtha, who was the head of the entire North Dakota Legacy Fund, who's making $20,000 a month, who marched up here, God bless her with her whole family, but unfortunately, I asked her a few basic inquiries, and she didn't know. "Where do you get your news from, Ms. Murtha?" "Oh, I don't want to talk about that with the biggest smile on her face." Well, it's really not a smiling matter when you don't know history, and you're coming up here to give your opinions on things. You know, in truck driving and other careers, you get drug tested, because they want to be sure, when you're on that road, you have a sound mind. When people are coming up here to speak, if you don't know history, you don't really have a sound mind either. You're coming up here popping off with your opinions, and 90% of my critics in Sacramento, in California, and in here, are women. There is a reason why the founders understood, and, and women were not allowed in the political process, is because they're very emotional, and they're easy to be manipulated. God bless the women in the home, her nurturing nature, and all of this is a wonderful thing which enable our families. But outside of the home, women can become a terror, and that is something that must be addressed. So there's four principles that I think would be wise to consider.
Mr. Mayor, can I call up one word? Is there people, can we call this obstruction?
So if they have business, that's their issue. If, if a speaker says something that's controversial, that's their issue. That's their response. And if anyone from the audience has an issue, we could have a debate, and I'll destroy anyone in the audience. And I don't care what city it is. What I'm saying is-
Mr. Massimo.
It's true in every single city and every single state in America.
I think we're being more than gracious again tonight for you.
But the thing is, it's not about being gracious.
Please finish your comments.
It's not about, it's about that God gave me the right to say this, and if anyone has an issue like him, or you-
But God didn't give you that pulpit.
God did give me this pulpit.
No, he didn't.
And he will take you out of your seat if you don't respect the right of mind to this pulpit. And he will take you out of your seat if you don't respect the right of mind to this pulpit. The First Amendment was followed by what amendment, Mayor? The Second Amendment, that's how serious it was. When you start messing with-
Is that a threat?
What was it? What is it followed by the Second Amendment for?
Is that a threat?
The found- what did they put the First Amendment followed by the Second Amendment for? Why? Because they understood if you and other tyrants like these petty, functionary bureaucrats, if they interfere with someone's First Amendment rights-
Mr. Massimo.
Misano. Please announce by- pronounce my name correctly.
What is it?
It's Misano.
Misano?
That's right.
Okay. You just claimed that women shouldn't be allowed outside the home because they're very emotional.
But I did not say that. You're distorting my words. I said women in politics-
Somebody's very emotional right now.
Well, how about this? Can you name one objective statistic about how America has improved since nineteen twenty-one, the Nineteenth Amendment was passed?
Please finish- please finish your comment.
Well, if you disagree with me, just give me one statistic. You can't, so I'm right, and you're wrong. So please do not interrupt me when I'm talking. So the decorum rules are because people in the audience are disruptive. That would be you. If you have a prob- if he has a problem with what I'm saying-
You're out of order.
No, you're out of order, and he's-
You're out of order.
If he has a problem with what I'm saying, he could march his happy backside up here for fifteen minutes and dis- disapprove of what I'm saying. That's his right. He does not have the right to interrupt me when I am speaking.
Please finish your comments.
I am finishing. Please keep- if he wants to interrupt, kick him out of the meeting. And those who left, if they can't listen to it-
Please finish.
If you can't handle the heat in the kitchen, get out.
You are out of order.
No, you're out of order. The order is I have the right to speak, and you're disrupting my right to speak. You are violating the First Amendment. I have done nothing wrong. If you have a problem with what I say, come up here and state it. See, this is- the whole purpose of a public meeting is to have disapproving opinions expressed publicly and let the most, the winning opinion win.
Mr. President, I move to take a recess.
Now, employees do not have the right to disrupt a meeting. He should be fired. What are you allowing this for?
We have a motion for a recess.
Second.
We're in recess. Call the meeting back to order. Mr. Massimo?
Misano.
Misano?
Yes.
I would like you, I would ask you, finish your comments within one minute. Your comments this evening have been disruptive. And you have not allowed us conduct the business that this city needs to conduct, and you have threatened us. And I will give you one minute, and then I will ask you to yield and leave the chamber.
Two thousand years ago, a man was put to death for disrupting the business of a meeting. I would ask us to remember that and not repeat and not act like pilot. I kind of remember a large crowd that did not like a man, that asked for him to be crucified. Do you remember that? Gandhi said, "Many people-" and I took fif- fifteen minutes is what I've had, and fifteen minutes is what I'm gonna take. And if the crowd doesn't like it, they know where to go and they know what to do. But the First Amendment is from God, and I don't intend to let any man, not in this room and not on this earth, interfere with my God-given rights. Gandhi said, "Many people, especially ignorant people, want to punish you for speaking the truth, for being correct, for being you. Never apologize for being incorrect or for being years ahead of your time. If you're right and you know it, speak your mind, even if you are a minority of one. The truth is still the truth." Franklin again, "Freedom of speech is a principal pillar of a free government. When this support is taken away, the constitution of a free society is dissolved, and tyranny is erected on its ruins. Republics and limited monarchies derive their strength and vigor from a popular examination into the action of the magistrates." Teddy Roosevelt. Elkhorn Ranch is a great place. I'm going to take my ti- I had fifteen minutes, and I'm gonna take fifteen minutes.
You're out of order, and I'm gonna ask you to leave.
No, I'm not out of order.
Yes, you are.
I'm entirely in order. I spoke for fifteen minutes eight times before, and I'm gonna do it again tonight. Just because the audience can't handle it does not mean a thing to me. It is your job-
To yield.
They are out of order. If they disagree with what I have to say, if any person from the audience disagrees, the vast majority of the audience is courteous and polite.
I'm gonna ask you to leave one more time, and then we're gonna have you removed from the chamber.
I'm not moving. So if you want to use the police and abuse them-
Please, please remove him.
Teddy Roosevelt said, "Free speech exercised both individually and through a free press is a necessity in any country where people are themselves free."
Ma'am?
I'm not going anywhere.
You are gonna go somewhere.
I'm not going anywhere.
You're leaving right now.
No, ma'am, ma'am, I'm not.
Yeah, you are. Let's go.
All right, now, I'd like to get back to the business of the city. So-
Mr. President, may I take just a couple of minutes to read a little?
You have your time, Commissioner Riddle at the end there.
That's fine.
That's there in the commission. This is for the people right now.
That's fine.
Okay. If anybody else wishes to come forward, please come forward, state your name.
I don't know how I'm gonna follow that. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Kenny Costle, Kia Dickinson resident. I guess this is pertaining to the little yellow sheet that was sent out to all the residents on the adjustment of the value of their homes. Why does it matter of what the value of my home is worth to the city? It should matter to the lender and to the insurance company. The city should just tax on square footage of what us residents occupy. I feel as though a person is punished for bettering themselves and for caring of what they live in. We built our homes, or I built our home, so we could afford it. I should have built, or I should have bought, an old home. Would have bettered us. How can a adjuster just drive by my house and raise the value of our home two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand dollars? Is what the- on that piece of paper that came.
Mr. Costle, I don't mean to interrupt you, but have you contacted the assessor's office?
Yeah. He did, and he said, "Well, we can come through your home, knock on your door, and go through my- go through my house." Well, I don't want him in my house. That's my privacy, you know?
And you have that right.
And he, I mean, I don't see how it can go up anymore if he goes through my house. I mean, it jumped over just about fifty percent. And since it did that, you know, my wife, wife and I, we're staying here for the kids and our grandkids now. But she wanted to stay here more than I did. When I retired, I wanted to move on, move out, and then our kids had grandkids. But now, kind of made up her mind that now we're gonna clean the place up and move on. And it's hard to say, but I don't know how it can go from, you know, I don't want to throw my number out there, but it went up two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand dollars. You know, that's gonna cost me, I estimate probably two thousand dollars a year more on my taxes. And I feel as though, to better yourself, you'd be, you know, you're being punished. Because I can look at any other homes, and, you know, we could afford to do it ourselves to have a newer home. But now it just comes back and it kicks you right in the butt, and they jack, jack everything up, so.
Well, Mr. Costle, I'll just say this, you know, some of us may agree with your comments that it should be on square footage, some may not. But we are bound by state law how our assessor operates. Now, to your specific property, I can't speak why that assessment went to what it is. But I would welcome, you know, welcome you to come to the Board of Adjustment.
And that's next week, I think.
Next week, and present your case, because we can't-
I was told this meeting-
Yeah, we can't do anything here.
Okay.
And that's to everybody that's in the crowd right now. We can't do anything tonight. The only place that that can happen is the Board of Adjustment.
And that's on April ninth, correct?
That's the only time. I mean, we feel for y'all.
I know.
I mean, but we have to have that argument on the ninth.
Okay.
And just so, you know, it's clear to everybody.
Right, right.
Want you to go to the assessor, which you did, and I appreciate that. And come back, and if you've ever been to assessing before, you'll-
No, I haven't.
Yeah, we hear individual cases all the time.
It's like a fester, you know? My wife says, "Well, you just gotta go down and talk to him," and so.
And that's- and I know sometimes it gets put out on, online, just come to the city commission meeting and throw that out there. But the process is coming to-
Right.
You know, the Board of Equalization and going through that.
Okay.
So.
I appreciate it.
And-
Mr. President, Mr. Costle, I want to say, we tried last year. We put a cap at, we tried to put a cap of fifteen percent of a valuation increase every year.
Yep.
But that got overturned at the next level. So I plan on trying again this year. It might be more extreme than fifteen percent.
Well, I saw the one last year, and I thought, if I could get this for my house of what they gave me on last year's, shit, I would have packed my bags right away.
Yeah.
You know, and now they raised two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand. I'm like, holy smokes. There's no way I would get that on the market. You know, if I, if I could, holy smokes.
I mean, we're not unempathetic to where you're sitting right now.
And I'm sure I'm not the only one that's like that. All right, like I said, it was just a fester that I had.
I appreciate you coming up. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good evening, Commissioners, and President Decker. I am David Steinbach. I live at eleven ninety-two Eleventh Avenue East, where my family has resided for over forty years. And I have attended many meetings over the years. And I've came to the meetings, and they ask people if you're concerned about something, to get up and speak. Well, now, now, you're past, I don't think you, I couldn't hear in the back very well. But, I mean, it sounds like you're trying to silence the citizens from speaking at the meetings.
We're just putting a time limit on it.
And is there a need to sign up beforehand?
Just to make sure that you are a city resident.
Oh, so a person can call in without having to personally come down here and sign a sheet?
I would prefer, I think we all would prefer that you're here.
Yeah, but I mean, to get on the agenda for the meeting to speak.
I would suppose they could call in, yes.
Because that's, it disrupts my, I'm my wife's caretaker, and you know, that takes me away from the house more than I care to need to, especially like now, tonight. And I also live in the same neighborhood as Mr. Costle. He lives across the street, and I helped him build his house when he built it. And I went through the records and nursed seven houses in our neighborhood that have gone up over a hundred thousand dollars in values. Now, that's plum insane. Mine went up forty-five percent, his fifty percent, several others forty percent, and I started checking some for the last two years. And for the last two years, combined with now, they've gone up over forty percent. You can look through a lot of them, and a lot of them never even made ten percent increases. Now, if you're gonna increase somebody's house values forty-five and fifty percent, it should be all across the board, everybody in the city of Dickinson, not just a few here and there. The one neighbor across the street, they just bought their house a year ago. It's on the site, it shows what they paid for it. They've priced it up a hundred-and-fifty-four thousand more than what it sold for. Now, how can you justify that? You know, I thought they went by how much the local housing sold for around you. And this is a house that's, let's see, it was built in two thousand and three. And mine was built in nineteen eighty, so that's twenty-three years newer than my house. And they jump at a hundred-and-fifty-four thousand in one shot? There's something drastically wrong. Whereas the other house across the street from them only raised seven point nine percent. It looks a little fishy, because that's the city employee. It's just totally out of line, especially when you turn on the news, and they're talking about up in Bismarck at the state about fixing the property taxes. You know, how can they be talking about every time you turn on the TV about the concern for property taxes, and then we get an increase, increases of forty-five and fifty percent in your taxes, or the value of your house? And I called them, and I've been filling out my paperwork for the homestead credit, because I very easily qualify, and I sent in for the state. And I called the state, and the guy figured it out for me what my taxes would be, and it was like another seventeen hundred dollars over my homestead credit and the other extra five hundred dollars. Now, when you're on a fixed budget, my wife's been in the hospital three out of the last four years, and had been in the nursing home, and I had to pay out of pocket. I don't know how they expect you to come up with this money. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Does anybody else wish to come forward? Anyone else wish to come forward? Okay, we will move to Commissioners' comments. Commissioner, do you have any comments?
Mr. President.
Commissioner Riddle?
In lieu of prior events, I'd like to read a little bit out of Ephesians five tonight. Those that don't want to hear it, please feel free to leave. Those that do want to hear it, thank you. "Imitate God therefore in everything you do, because we are all His dear children. Live a life filled with love, following the example of Christ. He loved us and offered Himself as a sacrifice for us. A pleasing aroma to God. Let there be no sexual immorality, impurity, or greed among you. Such sins have no place among God's people. Obscene stories, foolish talk, and coarse jokes, these are not for you. Instead, let there be thankfulness to God. You can be sure that no immoral and pure, for greedy person will inherit the kingdom of Christ and of God. For a greedy person is an idolater, a worshiping the things of this world. Do not be fooled by those who try to excuse these sins, for the anger of God will fall on all who disobey Him. Don't participate in the things these people do. For once you are full of darkness, but now you have light from the Lord. So live as people of light, for the light within you produces only what is good and right and true." Thank you.
Commissioners, any other Commissioners have any comments?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Commissioner Otterman?
I've had some conversations with folks the last couple weeks, couple months. Just talking about these meetings and getting involved in local politics. And one of the things that a number of them have expressed is that something that precludes them from running for office is when we hold these meetings. And something I think is maybe perhaps worth talking about is Tuesday nights, especially if you are a young person with a young family, can be, can be really, really busy. And, you know, the county commission, they meet on Tuesday mornings. Is there perhaps a better time or cadence at these meetings that would encourage and enable more people to run for office and seek places on this commission and other bodies, but in particular, this one? I just wanted to throw that idea out here. What they had thrown out is like, you know, if the county commission meets on Tuesday mornings at nine AM, city commission meets on Monday mornings at nine AM. So there's a cadence there where city meets one day, then the next day, county meets. I know that changes a lot of what we do here in terms of what we've traditionally done. changes a lot of what we do here, uh, in terms of what we've traditionally done, but, uh, I think it's getting harder and harder to find people to run for office, and the more we can do to, um, open up that door, um, for a larger, I mean, like, uh, a buffet of people to be on that ballot, I, I think the, uh, the better, um, for us as a community. So I just wanted to throw it out there. I don't think it's anything that we need to do tonight, but, um, I thought it was worth discussion.
Thank you for your comments. Um, I don't think it's just the time that we hold these meetings that are making people not run. Commissioner Baer, Commissioner Frederick, you have any comments? All right. I, I guess I'll end this with, I just want to apologize to the people of Dickinson. Shouldn't have to go through this. None of us should. And this is, uh, we're just here to do the business and work for you as individuals and, and conduct this city in a, uh, respectful way, and, and take care of, of business and take care of you guys, and I just want to apologize. And I'll just in advance to any of you that show up at the Board of Equalization, I, as I had announced a couple of weeks ago, I had a prior commitment. I cannot be at the, the, the Board next week, so Commissioner Baer will be running it. I have full faith in this, the Commissioners, um, that they will do the right thing, and moving forward and hear all your, um, your concerns with your properties, like Mr. Costle, like you came up with, Mr. Steinbeck came up with. I think they will do a great job, and, um, again, I'd just like to apologize. Shouldn't have to go through that. We're, uh, we're a, a much better city than that, so. I appreciate you all for coming out tonight, so. Look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned.